The November meeting of the Suffolk City Planning Commission will now come to order. I will call on Commissioner Creekmore for the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We ask that you will be in our midst. Help us to engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace to make appropriate decisions that will positively affect our city. Help us to be able to review the matters at hand in a reasonable and thoughtful way, and watch over and protect us during these difficult and challenging times. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals this day. Amen.
Hanley, if you'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Benton.
Present.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Mr. Everwin.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Mr.
Hicks.
Here.
Mr. Rector.
Here.
Mr. Singleton.
Here.
Mr. Staler.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, all members present, you do have a quorum.
Thank you for that. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the October meeting? If not, those minutes will stand approved as presented. Public hearings are our first matter of business this afternoon. Public hearings are thirty minutes in length, ten minutes for the proponents, fifteen minutes for opposition, five minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. Our first public hearing this afternoon is rezoning request, RZN 2019-411, conditional, Godwin Park. Mr. Hanley, if you'll present the caption, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this request was submitted by John H. Peterson, III, of the Terry Peterson Company's applicant on behalf of Mark H. Brinkley, Northgate LLC, property owner, in accordance with Section 31404 and 31405 of the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone and amend official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from B2, general commercial, OI office institutional, M1 light industrial, and RR rural residential zoning districts to MUD mixed-use development overlay district for property located at 2906, 2910, 2916, 2920, and 2922 Godwin Boulevard, 2999, 3005, and 3009 Corporate Lane, and 1005 Commercial Lane, zoning map 26, parcels 3*3C, 3*3D, 3*3E, 3*3, 3*1, 3*2, 3*2B, and 3*2D, and 3*2C, respectively. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chuckettuck Voting Borough, Zone B2, general commercial, OI office institutional, M1 light industrial, and RR rural residential zoning districts. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act upon this request, you act upon a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2019-00011, conditional. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, I recognize Mr. Wine, Staff Planner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I do want to preface this, as that caption indicated, there's a lot of very pertinent information to this case, so I do have a pretty lengthy presentation, please bear with me. But there's, like I said, a lot of very important considerations with this particular application. But as Mr. Hanley stated, the applicant is requesting a change in zoning from B2, general commercial, OI office institutional, M1 light industrial, and RR rural residential zoning districts to the MUD mixed-use development overlay district, conditional, for a collection of nine separate parcels located along Godwin Boulevard, Commercial Lane, and Corporate Lane in the Central Growth Area of the city. The approximately 117-acre site is a mix of commercially developed out parcels concentrated along Godwin Boulevard, Commercial Lane, and Corporate Lane, and a single-family home is located at 2922 Godwin Boulevard. A largely cleared and vacant land comprises most of the property. The site is bounded by Godwin Boulevard to the west, the Hillpoint Farms planned community to the east, and the Centerra Obacy Hospital to the south. As presented and proffered by the applicant, the applicant proposes to develop the site as a mixed-use development consisting of up to 520 multifamily dwelling units, a minimum of 260 which will consist of no more than one bedroom, 120 single-family attached units, 60 single-family detached units, 85,000 square feet of commercial, and 24,000 square feet of medical office space. Development is proposed in phases, with Phase 1 consisting of those 60 single-family residential detached units, the 120 single-family attached residential units, 260 multifamily units, and the commercial and office space previously discussed. Phase 2 of the development would include the additional 260 multifamily dwelling units and allow for the potential for additional commercial space. The conceptual plan, which, as mentioned, is proffered as a part of the Provided Design Guidelines, depicts a development with two distinct districts, a mixed-use commercial district and a residential village. As stated within the Design Guidelines, the mixed-use commercial district is envisioned for office, retail, hospitality, restaurant, entertainment, assisted living, and potentially residential uses. The residential village is expected to consist of various single- and multifamily residential housing products. The development will have an internal street network with a variety of street types ranging from four-lane boulevards with landscape medians to two-lane private streets with on-street parking. All street types will provide streetscaping and sidewalks, and the points of entry to the site include the main entrance from the signalized intersection of Godwin Boulevard and Corporate Lane. Two additional access points are envisioned, one at the southern extreme of the property at the Kensington Boulevard Medical Parkway, and another between the previously mentioned access points on an existing commercial entrance between the existing Taco Bell and Bojangles' restaurants to the north and the Walgreens Pharmacy to the south. So the subject properties are located within the Central Growth Area. Under the Focused Growth Approach outlined in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, the properties fall within the Suburban Use District. The district is defined as the least dense area inside the growth areas. This district should primarily be comprised of traditional residential subdivisions. The single-family dwellings are the most common use found in this district, and retail uses in the district are primarily neighborhood scale centers. Larger subregional uses may be accommodated on specifically identified sites with direct access to major transportation routes. The suburban use district recommends a density of 1 to 5 units per acre with a recommended floor area ratio of .02-0.5 for non-residential development. Additionally, it is recommended that buildings do not exceed a maximum of 45 feet in height, and the Comprehensive Plan recommends a residential density of 1 to 5 units per acre within the suburban use district. However, it is important to note that Action 24D of the Comprehensive Plan states to consider allowing higher-density residential development than prescribed in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan in certain areas of the suburban use district where transportation corridors and infrastructure are already established and where the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses and the established development pattern. This is important as the mixed-use development overlay is anticipated to yield development density similar to the Central Business District or a traditional neighborhood development. Within the Central Business District, for instance, densities up to 40 units per acre are permitted by right. As depicted on the Ann Proffer through the Provided Design Guidelines, the proposal would yield a maximum density of up to 30 units per acre in certain designated residential pods. The proposed residential development on the property will include up to 700 total units of mixed types. When calculating the acreage for the areas designated for residential use on the submitted proposed zoning map, these areas constitute a total of 55.84 acres when open space is taken into account. Across this acreage, the proposed 700 dwelling units would result in a density of 12 and a half units per acre. The density yield does exceed the maximum recommended within the Comprehensive Plan, however, as previously noted, Action 242 does allow for exceptions from that. The proposed commercial use is also compatible with the existing commercial users located along Godwin Boulevard and established along this corridor. The Comprehensive Plan also sets specific themes and policies related to land use transportation, open space, and the environment that should be considered when contemplating a rezoning application, and specifically relevant to this application, we have Policy 2.1, which speaks to keeping development focused in designated growth areas, and the insurance that the city's land use regulations support higher-density and intensity development in these focused growth areas. Policy 2.2, to assure that development occurs in a predictable and orderly manner. Policy 2, or additionally, Action 22B, develop and maintain incentives in land use regulations that support traditional neighborhood designs. Policy 2.3, promote a balance of residential and non-residential land uses. Policy 2.4, promote compatibility in land use patterns. Policy 4.1, provide opportunities for residents to adopt a lifestyle that is less dependent on auto travel. Policy 6.1, encourage development of a balanced and diverse housing stock throughout the So mixed-use developments are unique, and as specified within the UDO, they serve a purpose that is threefold: to provide for the orderly development of land while permitting flexibility in design, construction, and processing of mixed-use developments of equality which could not be achieved by traditional development under conventional zoning concepts; to implement the policies of the Comprehensive Plan by co-locating jobs and housing and providing for mixed-use centers; to provide neighborhood retail within communities; and lastly, while conventional zoning districts and the requirements set forth within the UDO are reasonable, there may be circumstances in which it is in the community's best interest to allow unique and/or creative mixed-use development designs and techniques that revitalize older commercial corridors, increase opportunities for infill development and mixed-use projects, encourage development that is less auto-dependent, and encourage mixed-use pedestrian-oriented development patterns where residents have services, jobs, shops, open space, and access to transit within walking distance to their homes. The regulations identify specific criteria for the establishment of the district, and key criteria include a minimum district size and applicability, a professional design team, a jobs-to-housing ratio of 1 or higher, a market study, and Design Guidelines. A key consideration when evaluating rezoning requests includes analysis of adequate public facilities. Specifically, the applicant provided a public facilities report, a water quality impact assessment, and a traffic impact analysis that have been reviewed by appropriate city departments. The Department of Public Utilities has indicated that city water and sewer are available to this area on both Corporate Lane and Medical Parkway. Water and sewer demands have been projected, and there appears to be sufficient capacity to serve this development as proposed. However, at the time of site plan, the project will be required to undergo water and pump station models to verify this capacity. The water quality impact assessment provided in support of the project states that the project will be designed to comply with applicable stormwater management regulations and will be subject to the previously approved master stormwater plan for the site. Existing runoff from the site will continue to outfall to the existing regional stormwater management facilities that were previously established. The stormwater runoff within the site will be directed by means of underground storm sewers to the existing lakes for water quality and quantity treatment, and final design and compliance review in regards to stormwater will be conducted also at the time of development So, as previously stated, an important component of this application was a traffic impact analysis, and has been closely reviewed by the Department of Public Works Traffic Engineering. Key findings of this study include the following: the study analyzed the project in two separate phases. Phase 1, which is expected to generate no more traffic than what the site could yield currently if developed by right with the existing zoning in place; and Phase 2, which would be dependent on two separate transportation projects that would increase capacity and safety along Godwin Boulevard and the Godwin Boulevard Route 58 interchange. As previously mentioned, there will be three separate points of entry, all originating from Godwin Boulevard in some respect. As presented and proffered by the applicant and in an effort to minimize traffic impacts, the first phase will consist of, as previously discussed, the 60 single-family detached dwelling units, 120 single-family attached dwelling units, 260 multifamily dwellings, 85,000 square feet of commercial retail space, and 24,000 square feet of medical office space. Phase 1 of the development will be limited to what the property could yield by right under its current zoning from a traffic generation standpoint, and as noted in the TIA, Phase 1 would generate approximately the same amount of traffic as an assumed 170,000 square feet of retail and 60 single-family detached dwelling units could yield on the property. Those are the assumptions made of the by-right capabilities within the TIA. By comparison, when analyzing the peak-hour trips expected by Phase 1 as proposed and the potential by-right yield of the site, Phase 1 would generate 340 net AM peak-hour trips and 520 net PM peak-hour trips. This is compared to 323 net AM peak-hour trips and 848 PM-hour peak trips assumed by the by-right development capabilities of the site. Additionally, as outlined within the TIA, nine separate improvements to the transportation network would be necessary prior to the construction of Phase 1 and have voluntarily been proffered by the applicant. Development of Phase 2, which is anticipated to include no more than the 260 additional multifamily dwellings and additional commercial and office space, would generate an additional 5,859 net daily trips to the site. These trips include 385 additional AM peak-hour trips and 546 additional net PM-hour trips. Construction of Phase 2 would be deferred. This deferment would allow the city to make improvements to the transportation network, and this deferment would be contingent on them being funded and ready for construction. These improvements, which have been determined necessary prior to the consideration of this development proposal, and which the city has already applied for funding through the Smart Scale process through the Virginia Department of Transportation, and anticipates incorporating into the Capital Improvements Plan upon identification of a funding mechanism include the following: the widening of Godwin Boulevard from 4 to 6 lanes from the Route 58 bypass to Kings Fork Road, and the improvements to existing Godwin Boulevard Route 58 interchange to reduce the queuing on the off-ramps. The additional capacity generated by these projects will allow for the future development of Phase 2 of Godwin Park while maintaining adequate levels of service within the Route 58 bypass interchange and along Godwin Boulevard. In addition to the deferral of the construction of Phase 2 until the construction is underway, the Godwin Boulevard improvements as noted above. Traffic Engineering has reviewed the submitted rezoning application dated November 2020, the Design Guidelines, and the proffer statement. The submitted materials demonstrate that adequate public facility requirements for the Central Growth Area, as outlined within the UDO, will be satisfied for Phase 1 with the proffered improvements by maintaining a level of service D or better at all studied intersections. Additionally, as noted above, the Department of Public Works has submitted two separate applications for Smart Scale funding through the Virginia Department of Transportation, as I previously noted, that would add substantial capacity to the Godwin Boulevard corridor and the Route 58 bypass interchange. These projects, as outlined above, would generate additional capacity that will allow for the future development of Phase 2 of Godwin Park while maintaining adequate levels of service within the Route 58 bypass interchange and along the Godwin Boulevard corridor. As such, Traffic Engineering has recommended approval of this request. Additionally, getting into schools, it should be noted that mixed-use developments do not generate students at a rate comparable to conventional development patterns. Mixed-use developments have the potential to achieve reduced student generation rates, as noted within the UDO. As noted, a portion of the property is presently zoned RR, which is RR Rural Residential zoning district, and could yield a by-right allowance of 45 single-family dwelling units, which, based on our UDO calculations for single-family units of 3 to 4 bedrooms, would generate 10 elementary school students, 5 middle school students, and 7 high school students. The project is currently zoned for Hillpoint Elementary, Kings Fork Middle, and Kings Fork High Schools. When considering committed development, Hillpoint Elementary and Kings Fork High School have deficit capacities based on their overall capacity. Kings Fork Middle School has sufficient capacity to serve the proposal. The applicant has researched similar mixed-use developments throughout the region to determine a baseline for student generation for this style of development. The research developments offer a product that is projected to be similar to the products constructed within Godwin Park. In accordance with the UDO student generation calculation, Godwin Park, as proffered, would be expected to generate 182 students total. That's 106 elementary school students, 41 middle school students, and 35 high school students. And when subtracting the by-right allowance, that drops to 96 elementary school students, 36 middle school students, and 28 high school students. According to the information provided by the applicant in support of the application, they anticipate their development to yield students at a rate of 25% of the UDO calculation for the elementary school level and a rate of 17% of the UDO method for the middle and high school levels. This results in 52 students total, specifically across all school levels. The developer anticipates generating 27 elementary school students, 12 middle school students, and 13 high school students. And when subtracting the by-right allowance, which we previously discussed, the new generation for this site would be 17 elementary school students, 7 middle school students, and 6 high school students. So, as mentioned, Kings Fork Middle School has capacity available to it. Hillpoint Elementary School and Kings Fork High School do not. But there are approved plans within the 2021 and 2030 Capital Improvements Plan which identifies the construction of a new downtown elementary school, which would relieve capacity at several nearby elementary schools, including Hillpoint. And there is a new high school in the CIP that would relieve overcrowding at specifically the two in the city that are overcrowded. Based upon the cost of the high school, it would be $53,360 million, and the construction of the high school is projected to be $28,090,000. As such, the cost to advance capacity at the elementary school level is $35,000, $135,112.50 per student. At the high school level, it is $26,680 per student. The applicant has voluntarily proffered $852.74 per unit to advance the capacity at the elementary school level, which equates to $596,918 across all proffered 700 units. Additionally, they've proffered $254.40 per unit to advance the capacity at the high school level, which equates to $178,800 across the 700 proposed dwelling units. Staff has looked at these figures and verified that the total offered for both elementary school level and high school level is sufficient to mitigate the impacts when distributed per unit across the entire proposal. Additionally, staff has closely reviewed the information submitted by the applicant that addresses the proposed generation rates for the proposed mixed-use development. And as mentioned above, mixed-use developments do not generate students at a rate comparable to conventional development patterns, and they have the potential to achieve reduced student generation rates. The applicant has proffered that 260 of the multifamily units will consist of one bedroom or less, which substantially reduces the development's impact to the school system. Furthermore, the data provided by the applicant provides real-life examples that show these types of development yield school-aged children at a much lower rate than traditional developments. Briefly getting into the proffers, there are substantial proffers have been offered by the applicant. I will go bullet point on those, but they have proffered the Design Guidelines that are associated with this application and were included in your packet. The establishment and responsibility of a property owner's association for this development. The unit breakdown, which is 700 dwelling units total, 180 of those would be single-family residential, to include 60 detached units, the remaining would be attached, 520 multifamily to include 260 one-bedroom units. The advancement of school capacity at the elementary and high school levels, the phasing of the development, as previously discussed, Phase 1 and Phase 2 for the purposes of transportation improvements, and an array of traffic improvements as identified in So in closing, the conditional rezoning request is consistent with the policies of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which encourages higher-density development along corridors where existing infrastructure exists and will create additional connectivity and walkability to the existing development surrounding the property. The request is compatible with the surrounding uses contained in the surrounding neighborhood. It increases transportation options within a vital corridor and improves the overall safety of motorists and pedestrians alike. Based on a technical review of public facilities necessary to serve the development, it's been determined that adequate public facilities will be available with the improvements discussed in the Adequate Public Facilities section. Further, the submitted proffers advance capacity to ensure that there will be no reduction in existing levels of service. All requirements of the UDO in Section 31419 as they relate to MUD overlay zoning appear to be met, and staff recommends approval of this conditional rezoning application with the submitted proffers. Thank you so much, and I will be available at the close of the public hearing to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Officer Jackson, is there anyone in the outlying area that would like to participate in this public hearing?
Yes, sir, Chair.
All right.
Your name is...
Thank you for that. All right. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Hello, I'm Mark Brinkley. I represent the family that has owned this farm for about the last 40 years, and I thought that it would be a good idea to kind of talk a little history about how we've gotten to where we are here today, because back in, I think it was '98, when the UDO and the rezoning on Route 10 all happened, we purposely did not rezone the rear of this property for anything other than rural residential, because it was where my mom and dad had their home place, and this was just a big farm at one time. But we knew with the coming of the new Obacy Hospital that there was going to be quite a bit of demand for retail and office park and stuff like that, and so we met with Obacy at that time, and we came up with design criteria and everything to develop the front of that farm to match the hospital, and for the last 20 years, that's what we've been doing. And for the last 20 years, that's what we've been doing. And I think that we have shown that we're committed to keeping the quality level on the front of that farm to match that with what is at the hospital. Well, about six years ago, my father got sick, and he ended up passing away. And my mother ended up moving out of the home into another home over in Pitchkettle Point. And so, the property was just sitting back there. And honestly, there's people from all around just kind of come through it and everything. And so, I sat down with my family, and I said, "You know, what do you think we need to do back here?" And they said, "Well, we don't know." I said, "Well, I think I should go sit down and talk to the city and ask them what they think we should do." So, I had a meeting with Pat Roberts and Scott Mills at that time, and they suggested that they felt it should be a residential-type development in the rear. And so, I agreed with them, and we went and did some research. And we pretty much decided as a family that to do that by ourselves was, we're general contractors, but we're commercial general contractors by trade, and it's not what we do. So, we spent the next two years interviewing developers that we could partner with, and we ended up choosing Terry Peterson to work with. But the main reason we chose them is that they had the same vision we had and that we could maintain control, because my family is very committed to making the rear of that property as nice as what's on the front of it. It's our home place, and we want it to stand the test of time. And so, we talked with the Petersons and came up with the plan that we've come up with, and that's where we are today. We're here, looking to rezone the rear of the property to just basically carry out the rest of our vision. And I'm kind of pushing to do this now, because I'm 54, and I figure that I got about 10 or 15 more years in my business career, and that y'all will still have me to deal with, and you can rest assured that we're going to do what we say that we're going to do. But with the road systems and everything that need to be put in place for us to fully do this project, it's probably going to take 15 years. So, that's why we're looking to rezone the rear of the property. And what we plan to do will be in keeping or not as nice as what we have on the front. And if you have any technical questions, I was going to have John come up and can answer those as well.
Good afternoon. My name's John Peterson. As Mark said, our company is the Terry Peterson Companies, and we're honored by the Brinkley family to partner with them on this exciting community. As you all might know, we filed this rezoning application about a year ago, or a little over a year ago. There's obviously been a lot of challenges to working through the process over the last year, and we'd just like to thank the Planning Department and the Public Works staff, as well as Traffic Engineering, for the hard work they've put into this. You all have seen from Kevin the details of this application, but our intent was to come here to you all with an application that was ready for approval. And so, we spent a lot of time working through a lot of details to resolve some of the issues that we all see as challenges in other projects. Some of those have been discussed, the traffic issues, school impacts, and just making sure that the stormwater management plans are acceptable. We appreciate the recommendation from the Planning Department and hope that this body also sees the value in this rezoning. As was mentioned, the design guidelines that we're proffering are such a critical part to ensuring that this is a quality development for the foreseeable future, and that no matter whom is the developer, that there's a set of design guidelines to make sure that there is coordination and balance to this community. There are very few sites in the city of Suffolk that have this kind of potential, and this is clearly one of them, if not the best one. And I think this is what, this was tailor-made for the mixed-use development overlay. Our company's experience has been in developing these mixed-use sites here in the city of Suffolk, as well as elsewhere, and we're putting that experience to work. So, we look forward to your questions. I'm here, obviously Mark's here, to answer any questions you might have, and we just ask for your approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson and Mr. Brinkley. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? No one who would like to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? No one present who would like to speak in opposition? Would either of you like to make any additional comments on behalf of this application? If not, we will now close the public hearing. I will turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
Chairman, I have a question. I'll address this to Mr. Wine first. The queuing of the traffic coming off 58 with the improvements on Godwin Boulevard with the light, the timing, could you walk us through the process of, say, releasing the traffic on Godwin to allow the traffic coming off 58? I think that's the way I read it. To allow for the traffic coming off to have a continuous flow?
Yeah, with the technical involvement in that question, I'll refer to our friends in the Traffic Engineering Department. Jason Satters is here to address those specifically. But I can say they looked at them very, very closely, in great detail, several times throughout this process, to ensure that they would work.
Thank you, Mr. Wine.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Singleton. So, yes, basically, what this starts with is to retime the signals along the corridor on Godwin Boulevard. The biggest part of this is to increase the cycle length out there. So, now where we may have, say, 130 seconds to run a full cycle at, say, the Centerbrook intersection, that's going to be extended to 150 seconds to give us more green time along Godwin Boulevard, so that we can flush more traffic north and south along that main corridor. By clearing that traffic out, it'll allow us to release more traffic off of that bypass, so that it doesn't queue up into the through lanes. Another item that's been proffered is a preemption system for that ramp, so that should that traffic begin to queue down towards the through lanes, it will automatically preempt the signal, give them a green so we can flush some of that traffic onto Godwin and try to prevent them from happening. So, those two things are the biggest part that will allow us to work effectively.
Yes, sir.
Just a minute, Mr. Salyas. While you at the podium, let me see if any other commissioner has any question to you concerning traffic.
I do have one, because I've brought up the subject of the length of time it takes to go from the bypass to Kings Fork on some other issues. Would all of the signals allow for that additional amount of time, or just the one, the first one there, that allows the traffic off of the bypass?
Sir, all of those signals will run off the same cycle length, and they will all be coordinated to operate efficiently together to try to move that traffic along the corridor, so you don't have stopping at every intersection.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Again, while Mr. Salyas is at the podium, any other questions to him concerning traffic?
Mr. Chairman, on the ultimate widening of Godwin Boulevard, it's fairly inconclusive as to any kind of timeframe for that. Do you have any kind of timeframe for that?
I do not. I guess the best that I can offer at this point is that applications, smart-scale applications have been submitted to VDOT. They're under consideration at this point. But at this point, we would have no, we have no commitment as to when those projects may be funded. So, these are, this is one of our higher priorities in the city as far as needing improvement. I expect that we will continue to submit applications until these projects are funded, but I have no way of knowing exactly how those will be graded out against other projects in the region and when we may be able to secure funding for those improved.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners to Mr. Salyas concerning traffic?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. To follow on with that, it would seem to me that a lot of this project development, as indicated by Mark, goes along with the widening of Godwin Boulevard. And we don't know when that's actually going to take place, right? The funding is not there, applications have been made. We have no idea what the timing is going to be associated with that, which is going to affect this overall project. Is that correct?
That's correct, but the applicant has proffered to basically defer development of Phase Two until such time as there's some movement on those two projects, both, not just one, but both of those projects begin to move forward towards construction.
Right. Okay, that was the only comment. Thank you.
Wine, were you going to add something to?
Yes, I just wanted to add to Mr. Kriegmeyer's question there. I'm not sure it's necessarily fair to say that a large portion of this development, certainly a portion of this development is located within Phase Two, but we can't dismiss that the applicant has demonstrated a by-right development of a certain amount. And a significant portion of that is located within Phase One, and they've demonstrated through that TIA that they can operate within an acceptable level of service for those 180 single-family dwellings, 260 multifamily dwellings, 85,000 square feet of retail space, and 24,000 square feet of medical office space, without us losing any levels of service. So, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Mr. Wine, if you'll linger for just a moment, but let me stay focused on Mr. Salyas in traffic. Any other questions from commissioners to Mr. Salyas while he's at the podium? Thank you, Mr. Salyas. Now, Mr. Wine, while you are up, I'm going to extend the same question to the commissioners. Are there any questions to Mr. Wine? Mr. Singleton?
This project you mentioned, the maximum height would be 45 feet. Does that equate to four floors?
That's, mind you, that 45 feet is typically what's acceptable within this use district. They do have sizing requirements as located in their design guidelines. I can say that nothing that they've submitted at this time indicates that they would need to exceed four stories, but generally, you're talking about 10 feet a floor or so. So, that would coincide with about four stories.
That's going to be basically the commercial phase, parcels, and the multifamily?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And while Mr. Wine is at the podium, any questions from commissioners to Mr. Wine?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if I can. Going back to the adequate public facilities in the schools, there's a lot of discussion in our package about various outlooks, if you will, as to what the outcome for the number of students is going to be. I guess ultimately, when you boil it down, even though there are two perspectives being presented, what is in the UDO and what we would normally practice is what is ultimately going to happen? Can you assure me of that?
Under normal circumstances, yes, but they've asked for the MUD in this case. So, as we've entertained in the past, we've allowed them to provide us with information that would allow us to not just specifically look at the UDO. While those numbers were provided to you all, they provided us information, in this case, in the form of real-life examples, that do demonstrate that these types of products, just based upon how they're structured, produce school-aged children at a much lower level. And in review of that information, staff has concluded that we're in agreement with that. We understand that there's a reduction available. So, with that being the case, in summary, it's some 27 elementary school students, I believe six middle school students, seven or 10 high school students that will generate. And that's before you subtract the by-right allowance that they could yield, as we do for all rezoning requests. There are 45 single-family units that they could construct, projecting the size of those with the information that they've provided. It allows for a further reduction, and they've proffered based upon that information.
And I was just, we started, as you well know, the capital improvements process, and so we had a pretty lengthy presentation last Friday. And it looked like that the improvements to the schools and the new schools that are going to be constructed, they're not in next year's budget, they're not in the year after that budget, they're several years down the road. So, it's, you know, I think it's very important that we pay attention to the school levels unless they're going to, you know, start a rezoning process, because it's my understanding the number of students hasn't grown, but where they are has. So, I'm just concerned that, you know, we don't overcrowd the schools, because some of them are already overcrowded.
That's a great point, and we try not to dismiss that fact in our consideration of it, but we do have a capital improvements plan. It's a 10-year plan, and you essentially have two portions of that plan, the five-year portion, and then you have what's called the out-years between years six and 10. At that point, while funding is committed, in theory, you may not start seeing that come off the board for several years out, even if it is in that committed portion of it.
Thank you. Again, commissioners, questions to Mr. Wine while he is at the podium?
Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Wine, I have a couple of questions for you. My first question is, as we went through the presentation, did we kind of see, or is there known how Phase One is going to actually build out, or we don't know how Phase One is going to actually build out over the land use?
We know what the makeup of that phase could include. As far as where it's located necessarily on the site, we don't know that information yet. Phases tend to unfold further through the development process. Obviously, would try to make sense of, due to infrastructure costs on the developer's hands, what they include in each phase. So, and to elaborate on that just a little bit, we know that what they've identified at Phase One and Phase Two, that doesn't necessarily mean that's how they're going to apply this once they go further down. We know what that overall yield can be before those transportation improvements can be. However, it's not uncommon for there to be multiple phases within that Phase One.
Second question is this. In our options for density, mixed use is the highest density. Am I correct?
It has the potential to be the highest. Part of the mixed-use development, they identify what that density yield would be. The highest by-right density allowance, we see in our central business district, which is up to about 40. However, with these mixed-use developments, a part of that is establishing within those design guidelines what the max density will be. They've identified it as 30 units per acre here. Based upon our calculations, it's closer to about 12 and a half units per acre.
And that's when you take out open space?
When you subtract open space, when you subtract other environmentally sensitive areas, and look at what area they plan to place some of this, it gets you to, I believe it was 55 or so acres. So, taking that 700 units that they've proffered max over that 55, that's where we get that 12 and a half units per acre.
And so, to make sure that I understand, since you say in reality, it's really 12, then in the suburban use district, it's basically about 1 to 5?
Yes.
Usually. And you saying the increase from 5 to around 12 would follow the Action 2-4D of higher?
Yes, and getting into that, with the suburban use district, like you mentioned, there's 1 to 5 units per acre, as recommended in the comp plan. Obviously, everything in the comp plan, we do use as guidance in making land use decisions. The next highest density ring would be the inner-ring suburban. That does allow for 6 to 12 units per acre. That does allow for 6 to 12 units per acre, so you're getting pretty close to that at that point. The location of this one is quite unique. It's in a developed area. All of those are considerations that we make and make in our recommendations. It's an infill site. The density experienced in Hillpoint Farms just to the north, you have areas that realize that 12 units per acre or so. So it's compatible from that perspective.
Okay, well, let me ask this question. So it would be easier, based off, like I said, once we get down to, you know, get down lower with granularity, there's really 12 units per acre when you start subtracting everything out. And so it would be easy to go ahead and just rezone it one on one package as a mixed use instead of chopping it up and do a B-12, or then do a residential or something, dah, 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 dah. It would just be easier for a design standpoint, just to make it mixed use now, and give the group kind of flexibility to build it out in the phase plans.
Yeah, that's really the purpose of the mixed use, is to allow the developer to identify the best portions of the property for the ultimate uses for it. And at this point, establishing at least a baseline density, or at least the absolute max density would be appropriate. But the purpose of the mixed-use development is to allow some sort of flexibility there while countering the unknowns for the market standpoint at this point. So that's why we've seen a couple of these over the past years.
Let me ask another question. I have time, okay. And have we built out a mixed use in the city of Suffolk so far?
Have we?
Have we built out a mixed-use development? Have we done something similar to this?
There are a few of them. The Obese One down the road is kind of continuing under development, but it's fairly built out at this point. Probably the most established one at this point is Harborview Station up behind...
That's Kroger?
Yes, yes. And the ultimate yield on that, just to give you some perspective, I don't know the retail and commercial numbers, but I do know that ultimately, they had 1,000 units approved as a part of that development.
Okay, well, I just want to say that the Kroger development is unbelievable, and it really changed the whole mood of northern Suffolk. And, you know, when you put everything together, it makes sense. So I appreciate you clarifying some things. What you're saying is it's really going from 5 to basically 12 when we take out the open space, and that kind of flows into higher range instead of the highest.
Yeah, and it's important that you leverage all of that available acreage. I can say that they have identified pods, as shown on this map. And it's important that you recognize that, once it gets a little further down the development stage, you'll have these individual pods. More often than not, they're subdivided off, and then you lose that additional acreage to utilize to get them to a more appropriate density. So I believe that may be one of the reasons that they selected 30 as their high end, because once you start evaluating, for instance, a multifamily project on, you know, 260 units on 5, 10 acres, that's getting you up there on the density. However, you can't discount all that's available around it, and with all the acreage that was associated with the original rezoning request.
Thank you for your answers, and this was a very well-written explanation. I really enjoyed it, I really did. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you both, but while Mr. Wyon is still at the podium, I turn to the commissioners. Anyone else have a question to Mr. Wyon while he's at the podium? Thank you, Mr. Wyon.
Thank you.
We have had the public hearing. We are into the portion of this application to where it's back to the commissioners. Questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Mr. Wyon for his presentation. This was probably one of the longest, as you indicated, that I've been, in the five-and-a-half years I've been here. It's also probably one of the finest presentations that's come before the Planning Commission as far as the quality of the information that was provided. So I'd like to thank the city staff and Mr. Wyon for your hard work on this. With that being said, I would like to move for approval. Rezoning requests are ZN 2019-11, conditional with conditions.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Staylor with conditions. Do I hear a second?
A second.
From, all right, Commissioner Edwards. Motion and second for approval. Discussion of the motion. Mr. Hanley, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Creakmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rector?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Staylor?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it passes 8 to 0.
And congratulations to Mr. Brinkley and to Mr. Peterson. And to follow up, this will go to City Council on December 16, but to follow up from what has been said by the other commissioners this afternoon, I do not believe I can ever remember an application that involved this much, that as much homework was done by the applicants that came forward with staff, staff's presentation, and commissioners' questions and analysis of what we're doing here this afternoon. Thank you all for the part that you had in this, and congratulations to the applicant. Our next public hearing this afternoon is conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-018, Borrego Solar Facility. Mr. Hanley, if you'll present the caption, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this request was submitted by Melissa Samaro of Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., applicant on behalf of Timothy Michael Butler, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31 306 and 31 406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit request to establish a solar energy facility on property located at 4029 Godwin Boulevard, zoning map 18 parcel 9. The effective area is further identified as being located in the Chuckettuck Voting Borough, Zone A Agricultural Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan design makes this area as part of the Rural Conservation Use District. When acted upon this request, you act upon a resolution to report and recommendation to City Council pertaining to conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-018. Mr. Chairman.
Officer Jackson, is anyone outside that should be a part of this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, no, sir.
Thank you, Officer Jackson. At this time, I recognize Ms. Baker.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. As Mr. Hanley stated, CUP 2020-018 is a conditional use permit request to establish a solar energy facility at 4029 Godwin Boulevard. It is further identified as zoning map 18 parcel 9, and is in the Chuckettuck Voting Borough and the Rural Conservation Use District. Due to the location of the subject property in the Rural Conservation District, a solar energy facility is not recommended in this area. A conflict exists with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and specifically Policy 2-2 regarding development occurring in an orderly and predictable manner. These issues include the Rural Conservation District provides an area of protection between the developed portions of the city and active agricultural lands. It is the first use type outside of the northern and central growth areas, and acts as a suburban rural interface to buffer more intense uses from agricultural and low-density, single-family residential. As this area is at the edge of the growth areas, future development should encourage uses that maintain this buffer. These uses include low-density residential and traditional hamlet and cluster subdivision patterns. Non-residential uses are also recommended in this area, and include agricultural, small convenience retail, and public safety facilities. While solar energy facilities may be permitted as a conditional use in the agricultural zoning district, due to these facilities being more industrial in nature, the solar energy facility does not maintain the rural nature of the area and may compromise the buffer between the growth areas. A solar energy facility may be more appropriate in the rural agricultural use district, where more intense uses, such as large-scale agriculture, forestry, agricultural processing, and agricultural manufacturing, are recommended. As mentioned, the conditional use permit request is located in the agricultural zoning district. The subject property is surrounded to the north and east by residential zoning districts, and to the west by agricultural land. The applicant is proposing a 3-megawatt solar energy facility. The property consists of one parcel with direct access from Godwin Boulevard. The total acreage of the property is 103.66 acres. While approximately 70 acres is subject to the conditional use permit, the solar facility will require a footprint of approximately 30 acres, with the balance of the parcel remaining The arrays will be a maximum of 10 feet in height. The panel racking system will rotate on a single-axis tracking system that will align with the position of the sun. Electrical equipment with motion-activated downlit lights will be placed on concrete pads throughout the site. Plans also call for a 7-foot chain-link fence around the perimeter of the solar arrays. A 15-foot-wide vegetative buffer and an existing tree line in wetland will screen the solar arrays from Godwin Boulevard to the east of the property. The property is wooded along its northern and southwesterly border. A 20-foot-wide gravel access driveway is proposed on Godwin Boulevard, from Godwin Boulevard. A 28-foot by 130-foot gravel laydown area will be utilized near the entrance during construction. Stormwater is proposed to be treated on-site, utilizing stormwater best-management practices through the use of stormwater conveyance channels, a culvert and a bi-dention plan indicated, pond indicated on this plan. The applicant has acknowledged that a 20-foot maintenance agreement and ditching and/or grass soils will also be required to accommodate the stormwater system. The proposal is anticipated to generate less than 2 acres of impervious surface, including the initial construction laydown area. While public water is available on Godwin Boulevard, and the conditional use permit request is within a public water service area, the proposed solar energy facility will be unmanned and will not require public water or sewer. With respect to policies in Chapter 5 of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, related to the availability and timing of public facilities, uses such as low-density residential or small convenience retail are more appropriate at this location. These uses benefit from the presence of public water and are more appropriate in the rural conservation area and the public water service area. This recommendation is due to the time and complexity involved in public water infrastructure planning, and the importance of the city to anticipate and predict areas of growth where additional infrastructure is needed. The conditional use permit request for a solar energy facility does not comply with the policies of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, staff recommends denial of conditional use permit, CUP 2020-018, due to the following issues and conflict as stated in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I'll stand by for any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Hi, my name is Justin Hart. I'm the Director of Project Development in the Mid-Atlantic. I manage this project, as well as many other regions that Borrego is involved in. I work for Borrego Solar, who specializes in small-scale solar projects, in the various aspects of development, including development on a project from greenfield all the way through construction. We also manage the EPC for other projects across the Commonwealth and across the US in general, and as well as the ongoing maintenance, operation and maintenance, which for solar projects is pretty minimal, grass cutting, electrical inspections in general. So again, Borrego is specialized in smaller projects, which this one is considered in Dominion. It participated in the 2019 Dominion RFP for small-scale projects. So in that RFP, they were in increments of 1-megawatt projects. This is three of those consolidated, and it moved through that RFP. As it progresses with the interconnection process with Dominion, which is comprised of three stages, we also are taking this project through permitting simultaneously. There is a requirement that the project has to meet the commercial operation date by the end of 2021, unless there's some provision of an extension. So in general, small-scale projects are a bit different than what you might see in Virginia. They are typically projects that connect directly into the distribution system, so they use existing infrastructure, no additional substations required. It connects to a local grid at either a 34.5 KV line or a 12.5 KV line, similar voltage that a house or building would draw from, so no additional infrastructure is needed to provide. The purpose of these smaller projects is to stay at a local level, to build inherent stability to the grid. So instead of having a hub-and-spoke model where large conventional generators would be pushing out power at a certain voltage, stepping it down to get to the local level, this skips that process and ties directly into the local grid to provide the community with renewable energy. So I'm here for questions, but with me here is Alex Duson, professional engineer with Borrego, also, you know, on our civil engineering team. And then in addition, Mark Ricketts from AES Consulting Engineers, also a professional engineer. So I'll defer the professional engineer questions to them, but I'll transition it now to Alex to talk about the project specifics. So thank you.
Good afternoon. As Justin said, my name's Alex Duson. I'm a civil engineer for Borrego, and I guess I wanted to spend just a minute going over kind of the concept of this, and then I wanted to kind of go through some of the items that have been identified as concerning in regards to complying with Unified Development Ordinance. So in general, when I describe these to friends or family, it's much more of a farm than it is a solar plant. I mean, the row spacing, the intensity of the use, and the size of it is not what you may see in the newspaper of these thousand-acre solar farms. It's just not. Almost all of these require heavy buffering, vegetative buffering around them. If we're doing our job right, you can't see it from the road, you can't see it from any adjacent parcel. So my suggestion would be to look at this more as an agricultural use that happens to have some solar panels on it than an industrial facility, and that it does meet the intent of Policy 2-2 in a buffering capacity between the Rural Conservation District, in my view. And one quote I had here was, "The view shed from all major roadways should be maintained with a rural aesthetic, using native vegetative trees and wide setbacks." We are consistent with that use. And the other item I had here was, "The low-intensity nature of this district also provides for resource protection and conservation of surface water supplies," which the facility, as was mentioned, does not require water or sewer. I agree, we are directly adjacent to a large water main. The interconnection of that for a small subdivision cost may be prohibitive. It's not something that we've looked at in detail, but we aren't using any water at all. So with that said, I'm certainly here for any questions or to review in greater detail what the facility is, but my general takeaways, or what I'm trying to convey to you, is that this is much more an agricultural use, and it is on an agricultural zone parcel. The fact that we are installing solar panels on top of it does change the nature of it, but we are screening that from any visibility. So the impact of the development is, by design, low. I'll stand by for any questions. Otherwise, ask Mark to come up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, my name is Mark Ricketts. I'm with AES Consulting Engineers. I'm the local consultant in this area with Borrego Solar. The main point that I'd like to talk about for a moment is just the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, and when you... Plan, and when you read the entirety of the write-up that you have in front of you, it talks a lot about the requirements of the ordinance, the UDO, and those sorts of things as far as how this development, how this project would occur. And in reading through that, we have met most of those guidelines as far as how it develops, how it's screened, how it's buffered, how it's installed, the design of it, and those sorts of things. And our goal is to be 100% compliant with that. The major issue has to do with its location relative to the comprehensive plan. And one of the issues, or several of the issues that it talks about in here is the fact that it conflicts or it prohibits the orderly development or implementation of the comprehensive plan. Well, one, the plan is a guideline for us on how the project will develop, and the other aspect of it is, in this particular area, the project itself doesn't really conflict or prohibit it because in the 30 acres, which is 30% of the 100 acres that's just this parcel, is additional development, the residential that's referred to in here, as well as small retail, can still occur around it. And because of the use itself, as Alex stated, in that it's not an intense industrial use, would not really conflict with the, any residential development that would occur around it or small retail. Essentially, it's a, as Alex said, it's just a quiet, passive facility. It doesn't really have any major activity associated with it at all. Additionally, one of the requirements is that it has a decommissioning plan. Projects like this have a lifespan, and the decommissioning plan has been provided such that at a point in the future that it could be decommissioned and removed from the property, and that that property could then develop more in conformance with the overall comprehensive plan. That general lifespan is about 20 years. It does vary from project to project. So with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, we're in 2020 now, that puts us through most of that life of the comprehensive plan, which obviously can be amended, usually is amended every five years. But again, I think that that decommissioning plan shows that it's not like we're going to put something on here that stays permanently. It has buildings and parking lots and all of those sorts of things. It's a facility that generates electricity for the community, and particularly the local community as well. I know one of the other aspects that's written in the staff write-up is the fact that you want development that helps the community at large, and that's what this facility does. It helps put power back into the power grid, helps strengthen and solidify the power grid in the area, in the immediate area, as well as the larger area outside. And again, as a professional engineer and licensed land surveyor, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you have as well, but that's the aspect that I'd like to talk about as well.
Mr. Griffiths, is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If not, would you like to make any additional comments on behalf of this application?
Just one clarification regarding the temporary nature of the facility. It would seem reasonable to me to think, while you're putting it there and saying it's only going to be there for 30 years, I don't believe you. And that is truly the intention, and it is, the progression and the technology of the modules increases at such a rate that in 30 years, if history is any lesson, we have every reason to believe we don't need 30 acres. We might not even need three acres at this location to produce the similar amount of power. So that's, it truly is a temporary facility with the sunset clause. Thank you.
Would you like to make any additional comments on behalf of this application? If not, we will now close the public hearing. I turn to the Commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Ms. Baker. Would you go through what the city requirement is for the buffer, for the vegetative buffer? I'm somewhat concerned about any of the solar farms being located on Main Thoroughfares, particularly after reviewing or going by and looking at the one that we approved the first time, the first one that's out off of 460, which basically is weeds and dead trees and chain-link fence. It's a total eyesore. So I'm very concerned that we would, in our main entrance ways to the city, Route 10 being one of those and 460 being another, that we've allowed there to become an eyesore. I know that the proponents made some comments about not being able to be seen from the road. What is the city requirement?
They do need a 15-foot-wide vegetative buffer, and it should be...
What does vegetative mean far as blocking the view of these facilities?
I may toss that to Kevin. He may know a little bit.
It is a combination of trees and shrubs and ground covers.
No berms required?
A berm is an option, but it's not a requirement.
Okay.
And the one on 460, I will tell you, is we have a bonding, and we have discussed the replacement of the dead plant material with them. And we're waiting to get to a point, which may occur tonight, since we're going to probably have frost, where the trees have gone dormant and replacement could start to occur. But we have bonding money to cover that landscaping right now.
So the city is very much aware of what's going on with that first facility?
Yes, and the tall grass, particularly inside the fence area, has been worked out with DEQ as a best-management plan. I think it's called light meadow, is I think the term that they called. It's a tar grass, native grass mix that does not need to be maintained.
So I know this doesn't have to do, but since we're talking about that facility, will the city require substantially more shelter in that location to block the view from 460?
No, sir. What's the code is the code right now. So they would be subject to the same rules. If we would go to want to increase the density of or thickness of the landscape both part, we would have to amend the code, the UDO.
Thank you very much. You've answered my question.
While we're on this, if I could participate for just a moment, I heard what you said about, I gather maybe it would be native grasses inside the fence?
Under that plan that was approved by DEQ inside of there, yes.
At this time of the year, that can become very dry and combustible, I would think, that a spark under the wrong conditions could create quite a dilemma. Or is my perspective incorrect?
It may be. I'm dealing outside of, I have read the comment one time about this because we had an issue with them that was discussed with them about the maintenance of the site primarily down at the corner of 460, and I'm forgetting what the little road is that comes it off to the side.
Old Myrtle?
Yeah, where that intersection occurs. And we got into them with this discussion about the landscaping that was used inside there. And so this is DEQ's recommendation on that site. But I agree, you know, dry grasslands can burn.
Very quickly.
Yes.
And very hot.
Yes.
While Ms. Baker is at the podium, let me turn to the Commissioners. Any other Commissioner have a question to Ms. Baker?
Chairman, I have one question for Ms. Baker. Ms. Baker, I'll put you on the spot one more time.
No. Oh, no.
As you put together this application, were any of the other, did you look at any of the other solar farms that we have approved in the city?
I did, and I, fortunately too, we do have Kevin Wine in the audience too that has done a lot of the other solar farms.
My question is, in this stated use district, have we approved any others in this use district?
I appreciate that question because I actually did look into that, and most of them that we have approved are rural agricultural district and not the rural conservation.
You said most or all?
All.
All. Oh, that's a little more definitive.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just look back to him.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. You handled that great.
I just look, I look back, I look back to them.
I didn't notice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, okay. At this time, I recognize Commissioner Singleton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hanley, since you have the code book there, is there a timeframe for the trees planted, say for this buffer, say like a Leland pine that takes probably three to five years to grow and block the view? Does the code require any plants that's fast-growing?
It specifies a minimum size, a time of installation, which I think is five to six feet tall, and trees have to be, I think, an inch and a half to two-inch caliber. And then there's certain shrubs that have to be in the 24 to 36-inch range. So it's the same as on a lot of other parking lot projects and everything else that we have standards for.
Again, while Ms. Baker is at the podium, any questions from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. Given the comments from the applicants that these things seem to have a lifespan of their own, I mean, I agree with the city's position that this is probably a poor place to put something like a solar farm that might be there for a long time, but given the fact that it has a short life expectancy, and I heard one gentleman say 20 years, and I heard another gentleman say 30 years, and it might not even be legal, but can you put a sunset clause on the conditional use permit itself so that in 20 years? Everybody shaking their head. Okay.
Kevin, a thought.
Like Roseanne, Roseanne, and then, never mind.
But that was a good question.
He's right.
Again, while Ms. Baker is at the podium, any questions from the Commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Baker. Again, we've had the public hearing. We're back to the Commissioners with questions, comments, or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to find the conditions. My motion is for denial because staff has done their due diligence on this, and the motion is for denial with the five conditions as stated.
Motion for denial?
The five conditions as stated.
We're just simply that, motion for denial. All right, thank you for that from Commissioner Singleton. Do I hear a second from Commissioner Hicks? Motion and second for denial. Discussion of the motion.
Yes means no, that's good.
Thank you for that amplification. Yes means no. The motion is for denial. Mr. Hanley, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Mr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Richter?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Staler?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion to deny passes eight to zero.
And will go to City Council on December 16. Our next and last public hearing this afternoon is conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-020, Unique Little Hands Daycare. Mr. Hanley, if you will present the caption, please.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner, this request was submitted by Devonte Thomas of Unique Little Hands, Inc., applicant and property owner, in accordance with Section 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, in order to amend previously-approved conditions pertaining to the establishment of a daycare-child care center on property located at 3,000 Godwin Boulevard, at 2996 Godwin Boulevard, zoning map 25 parcels 30G and 30*H. The purpose of this request is to increase the size of the facility pertaining to the development of Unique Little Hands Daycare, CUP 2015-01. The affected area is further identified as being located in Chukatack-Votingboro, Zone B2, General Commercial Zoning District. The 35 Comprehensive Plan dictates this area is part of the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. When I act upon this request, you act upon a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-020. Mr. Chairman.
Hanley, let me turn to Officer Jackson. Is anyone outside that would like to participate in this public hearing?
I have a question, Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I recognize Staff Planner, Ms. Swan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is an amendment to previously-approved conditions pertaining to a CUP for the establishment of a daycare-child day center on property located at 2996 and 3,000 Godwin Boulevard. In accordance with Section 31306-G1 of the Unified Development Ordinance, any changes in size or intensity of more than 5% of lot coverage or floor area necessitates review and amendment of any existing conditional use permit. This property is located in the suburban use district, part of the central growth area. The childcare facility is located at 3,000 Godwin Boulevard, while the fenced playground is located at 2996 Godwin Boulevard. Both properties are Zoned B2, General Commercial Zoning District, and the property is surrounded by retail shopping centers and medical offices, also Zoned B2. In 2015, the applicant received a conditional use permit for the establishment of a daycare-child day center. The applicant is proposing to expand the physical facility with a 1,620-square-foot addition attached to the rear of the existing building, and the associated parking lot will increase by four spaces. These additions will increase total square footage of the building to 4,847 square feet and total to 15 parking spaces. This property is subject to special corridor overlay district requirements. Parking requirements outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance, Table 606-2, require a minimum of one parking space per 375 square feet and a maximum of 1.5 spaces per 375 square feet for daycares. This daycare-child day center contains enough off-street parking to satisfy the requirements with 15 proposed parking spaces. Therefore, there is adequate parking for the proposed use. The proposed building addition dimensions are 29 feet by 26 feet and 4 inches. Depicted as Exhibit C, the proposed building addition will have two classrooms, one being 708 net usable square feet and the other 665 net usable square feet. The applicant is proposing to add one additional sink and remove a bathroom from the existing location and place it in the proposed building addition. Public Utilities has no concerns with this proposal. In addition to increasing square footage, the applicant is proposing to increase the age range of children served from previously 12 months to 12 years old to now six weeks to 12 years old. They are currently licensed to care for 68 children, and that would increase to 98 children. Additionally, the applicant plans on increasing staff from 15 to 18 employees. The proposed hours of operation are not changing from the current hours, which are 5:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. The fenced playground area will not be increasing or decreasing in size. The maximum impervious surface ratio for a B2 zone is 70%, and with the proposed building As previously stated, this is a conditional use permit amendment to amend previously-approved and adopted conditions from Ordinance Number 150032. Conditions from the previous ordinance were listed, but include limitations of the use of this site to be a commercial daycare-child daycare center, and that the applicant shall provide documentation from the Virginia Department of Social Services that shows... the Virginia Department of Social Services that shows that this daycare is properly licensed and et cetera. Staff recommends that this conditional use permit amendment be subject to all previous conditions as written in the staff report under the recommendation section, point number three. Staff has closely reviewed the request to determine its compatibility with the criteria outlined in Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance as it pertains to requested conditional use permits. After review, staff recommends approval of CUP 2020-020 with the conditions as noted in the attached resolution and ordinance. I am happy to answer any questions you may have following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swan. At this time, we will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Good afternoon. My name is Devonette Thomas. I'm the applicant. And I just want to say that, like she spoke and said, we opened in 2015. We've done it, and it's been two phases so far. When I first opened, we could have 37 children. We increased the capacity to now have 68 children, and we're asking for the additional space to hold 30 more children. The reason that I would like to do that is because we're turning away children every day, literally every day. Probably on an average of about, I would say, 14 children per week we've turned away. In the past, we have not taken care of babies. There's a great need in Suffolk, the city of Suffolk, to take care of smaller children. And with this addition, we will be able to serve younger children, younger than 12 months, which is the age that we currently serve. I am very passionate about this, and I hope you notice that our hours of operation are from 5:30 in the morning to 6:30. And the reason is, I worked for Norfolk Southern Railroad for 17 years before I took on this venture. I have a severely handicapped child, who's now 29. She has cerebral palsy, and a couple of other children. I have four children in all. And it was very difficult to find childcare facilities that opened early enough for me to get to the railroad and that stayed late enough for me to pick them up without paying late charges and things like that. And also, we take on many children who have been kicked out of other childcare facilities. Me having a daughter with cerebral palsy and understanding, just like children don't pick their parents, parents don't pick their children. And all families are looking for someone to meet their children's unique needs. And children have varying abilities, and we aim to meet those needs. And so that is why we are asking for the additional space. It is to serve the community.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Good afternoon. I'm Randy Hicks, architect for Ms. Thomas. I just want to come out in support of it. I've been to her facility, and I've worked with her tirelessly. And she is very, as she says, very passionate. And if you see her operation and her children, I think it supports the city of Suffolk and is complimentary to it. So, thank you.
Mr. Dixon, is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If not, would you like to make any additional comments on behalf of this application? If not, we will close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
Chair, can I move approval of conditional use permit amendment request, CUP 2020-20, with the five conditions?
Motion for approval from Commissioner Hicks with the conditions. Do I hear a second?
Second.
From Commissioner Rector.
Yes, sir.
From that zip code.
Yes, sir.
Motion and second from Commissioner Rector. Discussion of the motion. Motion for approval. Mr. Hanley, call for the roll, please.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Mr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Rector?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Staler?
Yes.
Eight to zero in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations, Ms. Thomas. This will go to City Council on December 16 with the recommendation for approval. It's very obvious you're providing a very valuable service to the city of Suffolk and the people. And apparently, your location is just a bonus to that for the people who need your service.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, let me flip the agenda here. That concludes our public hearings this afternoon. I'm not aware of any old business under new business. Mr. Hanley, if you'll give us a status report on City Council meeting of October 21, and any preliminary plat approvals.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner, City Council held their public hearing on agenda items forwarded from this body on October 21. There was one item there before them, which was a conditional use, 2020-014, at 6012 Steeplechase Lane, to establish a daycare home, family daycare home, for five to 12 children. That was sent forward with a recommendation to approve from this body, and it was approved by City Council. There were no preliminary plats approved in the last month by this, by staff, so we have no report on them. That concludes our staff report to you. Our staff would wish you collectively to have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley. At this time, I turn to the commissioners for any comments.
Mr. Chairman, I do have, this is a follow-up to the question dealing with the buffer zone on the solar farms. I know when we had the first one come up, I was looking at that one, saying, okay, we're going to take a look at this and see, you know, how this works out, how it is done. Then we had another one that was approved. I think the only other one was off Hozier Road, which was back up in the woods. Following up on what I said about my concern about the appearance of the one that we have that's in existence, what is the process for, where do you start a review process of looking at the ordinance, dealing with the buffer zone? Because I, as an individual, after looking at what's taken place off of 460, think that that ought to be looked at and reviewed, and maybe enforced with some requirements for mounds or something to screen these, because that is definitely an ugly project compared to a peanut field or cornfield or whatever that was there before.
Well, if that's a motion, and it gets a second, I think you are directing staff to take that and look at that study, and see if we bring back recommendations to increase the amount of buffering, or the type of buffering in favor of that.
And I would like to put that in the form of a motion, that we review the ordinance dealing with the buffer zones on solar farms for some improvement or enhancement to that ordinance.
All right, we have the motion as stated. And before I ask for a second, let me infuse a question here that goes back to a question I raised. It appears that the solar farm on 460 is very visible. You have paths for access to service to panels, but it appears that there is a lot of what I would describe as flammable grasses available there, subject, in my opinion, to what could be a very troublesome fire. Is that something that perhaps is deserving of consideration?
We can do that as part of the looking at the buffer, about looking what the ground cover is that is maintained in these areas. Staff has looked at some of these, some of them have a regular maintenance, I hate to say it, by goats or sheep, that keep the grass in check.
All right, does that need to be a part of the motion?
We'll consider it a part of the motion. We know what the scope is.
Okay, all right. Again, Commissioner Stala has presented a motion. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, considering it's going to come to ordinance, and Mr. Stala is on the ordinance committee, I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, as was stated. I'm not going to try to repeat that. Discussion of the motion. Mr. Hanley, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Mr. Everwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Rector?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Staler?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we understand the desire of the commission, and we'll prepare the study. We'll look at other municipalities and the buffer requirements that they have and such, and come back with a report to you, I'm hoping in January.
Will this go through the committee on ordinances?
Yes, sir, if we can reestablish how we're going to operate that committee, yes. I got to work out social distancing.
Okay, well, again, that's kind of a question. I think...
Normal procedure would be, yes, sir, it would go through there.
And I thought that. I thought that. But again, there's a very obvious consensus among the planning commissioners for the concern.
Yes.
So that this, as other applicants come forward, that our problem is not multiplied.
Yes, sir.
All right, again, we're on item six, commissioners' comments. And thank you for bringing that forward, Commissioner Stala. Again, commissioners' comments.
I have one other item. I'm sorry. The pipeline that was given to us recently, I think, was dated as of January 2019. Is that done on an annual basis, so that we would have one that would be updated as of January 2020?
Normally, yes, sir. But we are in most unusual times now, so we will try to update it as best as we can. We can update the part about the items on the pipeline that have moved from approved to committed, that are moving, you know, through the approval process. So where we have approved plats, you know, we move them from where they just have zoning to be where they have final plat approval and/or, you know, site plan approval, the generate units.
I wasn't anticipating that it would be something that would be hot off the press anytime soon, but just put it on your agenda somewhere.
Yes, I'd love to give you the correct, straight answer, but I'm not sure what we can do these days.
That's fine. I understand. I'm done.
Back to the commissioners.
I wish everybody a happy and a safe Thanksgiving.
Any additional comments, Commissioner Hicks?
I would just like to commend and congratulate the national, federal, and local folks who won in the last election process, and look forward to working with everyone as best as we can, and wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Hicks, they might could take an example from the city of Suffolk, how we operate. Again, commissioners, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make real quick comments. I want to thank staff for the presentations today and how well it was put together. I really appreciate, like I said, I really enjoyed reading everything from cover to cover this time. I really enjoyed it. I thank you for your insights. And also, you know, I guess I'm like the Grim Reaper, but I do want to send my condolences, and I think we all speak to Councilman Mirtia, who lost his son. So I just want to wish our condolences to him.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Any additional comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, we all have our reasons for wanting this pandemic to come to an end. But my personal one is, I'm either going to have to start bringing a pair of binoculars or perhaps getting a recliner, where I can see one of these screens a little bit better. And I believe Mr. kitchen, Mr. Everwine over there, is in the same boat, as it were.
There's a reason that some of you younger folks were assigned those seats.
Well, I do appreciate that. And also, I do want to wish everybody a happy and certainly a safe Thanksgiving, however you choose to celebrate it.
All right. Thank you for your attendance this afternoon and your participation. And with this, we are now adjourned.